...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We call a meeting to order. We will have to slightly amend the agenda before approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments of moving next week's meeting to the eighth of September. And on the approval of resolution twenty twenty seventeen, it should say sixteen, and with the approval of resolution twenty twenty dash eighteen, it should say dash seventeen.
Should go right. Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Iowa's approved. Minutes from the eight twenty-four meeting.
I've read the minutes at home and they all look fine, so I would make that motion.
Yes, sir. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, minutes approved. General public concerns. Generally concerned, hearing and seeing none, we will move on to the review action on some rezoning requests. And...
This was Randy's information from last week. He did need some motions made on each one of those. Motion for the Mid-American request to switch from agricultural A1 to commercial C1. And then the second motion on the Jergens' one to switch from residential R1.
A1.
Switch to, to switch from A1 to R1, yes.
And I did receive word from Randy, obviously not able to be here today, and he said that's all the motions due, everything is in order.
Do I go in individually?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to, Mid-Americans request to rezone from A1 agricultural to commercial C1.
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
I make a motion for Jay and Julie Jergens' request to rezone personal from A1 to R1.
I will second Bruce's motion.
Any further discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The engineer is not here. Can we drop down to, let's just put discussion on the Civil Service Commission. Anything shake loose on that?
Um, yes. I got a phone from Max for the news, asked him if he would like to continue to serve. I told him to serve with us. He said no, they'd like to be replaced.
Okay.
Um, the Civil Service Commission, you asked me to find a description of what they do. They, um, it includes serving with deputy sheriffs and that with the appointment of sheriffs and deputy sheriffs. And you have to go through the civil service process to get appointed. So, until this, Civil Service Board was consists of three people from our county. We look at all the applications and determine which one of those people would be appointed. So, I don't even know the last time they met.
They need to replace Max on it now?
Yes. And I don't know with who. I just thought I would let you know that he said no.
It can be anybody that we find.
As a county citizen is what we're looking for.
Right. So, it gives you some time to kind of...
What was the other board we needed on was the planning?
Planning's only...
Yeah. Well, I, do we have a description of that? Because I approached an individual and he says, "I would possibly be interested." And then I started telling him what I thought. It's, let me see if I can find a job description for you.
If you want to take the easy way out on that, and if you have someone that's interested, have them contact Randy.
Well, that's what I thought, but he's gone this week.
Yep.
So, they want to get their, I got an email from Randy, they're going to have a zoning board and a board of adjustment combination meeting, telling you who does what.
Just very...
The zoning board changes the zones, the board of adjustment, uh, variances. And some of them are kind of...
You know, for sure, which is their job description.
Yeah. So, he's going to get it all straightened out and have it going.
Well, this gentleman is a retired farmer that I think would be a pretty good fit for that.
Okay.
So, I just, we can get him, if I can get the information and let him and Randy visit, maybe I'll be out in the morning.
zoning board don't meet very often, and what they do is, if you're, if you've got some farm ground up here and you're building a house on it...
Just like what we passed?
They have to be rezoned.
Just like what we passed here, yes.
They have, it has to go in front of the zoning board. So, they do need a full contingent of board members, and with Civil Service, we need the three people there. I don't know if the press would be so kind as to make mention of that.
To shout out.
Yeah.
Sell them or...
Because you don't have a lot of people just running and screaming to join up on the board, so that would be appreciated. So, we'll keep looking. That's good news though, Bruce. Hopefully they'll carry forward with Randy. Uh, then we did amend our resolution to twenty twenty dash sixteen concerning the submission of claims.
I talked to you about this a few weeks ago, um, that we had in the past, at times received claims of over a year old. And there was a county that sent a resolution out to other auditors and said, um, this is what they did, that if they have a year from when the date of service is, if you don't get your bills in by then, then the county's not going to cover it. Otherwise, it messes up your budget. You can't budget for it. You can't get it in the same year that you want it to be in. And we felt like a year was plenty enough time that somebody should be able to get their bills. So, if you guys agree, then that's what this resolution would do. I would make that motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen.
Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. And we have the twenty twenty dash seventeen, concerning reimbursement for Iowa's COVID-19 government relief fund.
We had discussed, um, last week, or maybe it was the week before, about applying for the Iowa CARES money, um, for COVID-19. And we had discussed that we didn't really have a lot of expenses as far as, um, like they're saying you get 25% back from your public health employees. We don't have public health, they're at the hospital. Um, other things were not, there wasn't huge. But in order to get the Iowa CARES money, which is a little more flexible, it lets you claim different things, you have to go through the FEMA process first.
Oh, okay.
And then when FEMA denies you, then you can go to the Iowa CARES Act. Um, I've got a call in to Kerry, um, at the EMA office, because usually emergency management person does the FEMA part for you. So, I would like him to do that, and then we could, when that's done, then we've already got this passed, we're ready to apply for the Iowa. You have to have this in place or you can't apply for the Iowa CARES money.
I understand.
Um, the reason for this, there's some, um, equipment that I've already purchased for the November elections that I know we're going to need. A paper folder, uh, one that opens up envelopes, because we're going to have an unprecedented amount of absentee requests. Um, those got to be opened up. And then also, uh, new counting machines for in here for the absentee board, because at the primary, the one we had, there were so many ballots that we sent through, it took it forever at the end of the night to print out the file tape, and for the absentee board to be ready to do their write-ins and everything, and we wanted a faster machine. So, you can get a faster one, it's a smaller one, but of course, there's a price for it. So, we would be able to claim those under this CARES Act and get reimbursed back for it, because the equipment needed for an unusual purpose. I mean, we probably wouldn't have bought that equipment if we wouldn't have had this coming up. And I can see in the future, if things stay as they are, we're going to continue to do that.
You're going to have other expenses.
Yep. And then the reporter, there was some, uh, things that she saw on the list that her office could apply for, so she was interested also.
Okay. All right.
But it takes that part to be in place. He says you don't have to apply right away, as long as you've got your resolution in place, then you can do it later, yeah. First, the submission is due September fifteenth. So, we need to get on this right away to get our early claims covered, because we did have some personal protective equipment that we purchased, hand sanitizer, masks, things like that right away when COVID hit, that, um, we didn't get reimbursed for, we might as well turn those into FEMA and see if they'll ever use for.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen.
One second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. You have the ones to read a sign?
Yep.
I will do that. Um, now I have on the agenda, accept the resignation of Jennifer Green as a full-time jailer, effective, was effective eight twenty-six twenty twenty.
I'll take that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Accepted.
Like it's a go-through for many jails down there.
I don't know.
It's like about every other week, it's like jailer.
It does. Might be the hours at the end, but it's hours. Um, I thought we talked about next week's schedule.
Yep.
Well, uh, being it's Labor Day next week, I believe.
Yep.
Uh, and we have claims. I'll make a motion that we move our meeting to the eighth, at eight thirty.
Second. And the discussion is that I will not be here, but I think Rick, we're all in the room, tell like everybody else.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're going to have four, so we'll be good.
Cover the claims and whatever else, so first and second, any...
Okay.
Okay, so that's good. Just want to make sure that everybody can be aware. Uh, any further discussion past that? All those in favor of next week's meeting?
Aye.
Opposed? Tuesday, the eight thirty it is. Got that one. Um, in the essence of time, if you'd like to run through our community reports, since Ben's not here.
Uh, I had no official meetings this last week.
I had several, did I know on Tuesday night, um, it was a Zoom meeting. Thursday night, uh, CFR was also a Zoom meeting.
What was it, twenty-one, twenty-fifth? Okay.
Twenty-fifth and the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
And the twenty-eighth, um, we had a juvenile detention down in Eldora. And I did go down to that. They had, kind of a garrison last time, everybody called in.
Oh, on Zoom.
And kind of overlooked, so they didn't hook it up this time, and they ended up cleaning up all the members there, so everything went, well, that was all I had.
Monday, the twenty-fourth, Steve and I met at the Secondary Road to go over the, um, Henson's Renee and everything. Uh, then on Wednesday, the twenty-third, in the morning, we had a go-to meeting with our quad for C at County Social Services. That went, um, very well. Everybody was pretty much on, um, just discussing news that we had for the quad and kind of similar things of what we're looking for in the future. Sounds like Berry Hill and CFR have been working together pretty closely on, on some things. And so, we're feeling more confident that we're going to be able to stay a part of the whole region, CSS, but we won't know again until next month, for sure, a hundred percent. Um, and then in the afternoon, I traveled to Waterloo for CSS. Um, we had our second, um, interviews for, um, CEO, and the last two interviewers were awesome. I mean, they were, they just really did a good job. We're going to meet again, um, this Wednesday to make our final decision on which one, so we'll have a CEO in place by October one, which will help the whole region, region thing.
So, is the one that retired, they're gone, is he gone now?
He, yes, he was gone July, well, the end of June, no, it was the end of June. And the interim one, um, took over July one, well, July, June thirtieth, actually. And his last day was like June noon, the end of June, somewhere along that way. So, we've been able to keep going pretty well without him, getting to meet him, is the only good. And, um, the two that really created most of the problem with the, um, CSS and the region are, kind of look, they know that the, they're not going to be able to start their own, their own region. It's just...
Not possible.
Feasibly. I mean, or financially, I mean, not feasibly. Well, both, really.
Yeah. They got the entire staff.
Right. I mean, you're looking at being able to get providers and get everything going and not skip a beat with our, with, with our clients and things like that, that's just not, and then plus financially, like, that our, our living would, loving would probably almost double. And that's an estimate, I mean, there's nothing official, you guys, I just said that, but, I mean, just kind of by...
Nice meeting.
They put a budget together, they went strictly core services, nothing of the extra stuff, and the core services, that budget was higher than what we're paying right now. Not a lot higher, but still, but they didn't have all the figures in there right either. I'm not, we're not for sure where they pulled the numbers from, so, so there's three kind of that just do not want to, and you can't do it with three. You can do it with three according to state law, but it just wouldn't make sense to do it. There wouldn't be enough for capita. Okay, I'm this.
Any...
That's it.
Okay. Uh, Sandy said we would have met up at Secondary Road when it was, stepped off there with the man.
Thank you for that, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was fun. I enjoyed it.
Of course, it's in your field.
Yeah. I, I kind of like that kind of stuff. I'm a geek, I guess. On that stuff.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
Uh, Wednesday, we had a Region Five Zoom meeting, and we talked about the new truck and some of the stuff that's going on. I guess they brought the new truck up here to Humboldt, I didn't...
I didn't. I saw that email too, and I wish I had known. I don't look for it and look for it.
Yeah. They said my personal one, not my, my, I don't always look at my personal one every day, but I do my county one.
Anyway, they brought it up to the fire department to look at, so. Uh, then in the afternoon on Wednesday, I had a Midas meeting, and that was in Fort Dodge. Uh, it was kind of funny, because the Zoom setup was on Kathy's computer here, and we was in a great big long room, and you couldn't hear everybody, and we tried to telephone, that didn't work, and too much feedback, so. But we did have a Midas meeting. Uh, they had a public hearing in the afternoon on the trails, a couple of trails and stuff, and I didn't go down to that, and even though nobody showed up to win anyway.
Day clarification, Region Five, was that hazmat?
Hazmat, yes.
Okay, and was that in Fort Dodge?
It was Zoom.
Zoom, okay.
Yeah, it was at Fort Dodge, but they Zoomed me.
Okay.
That one went all the good, because one in the afternoon, and I was down four yet. And while I was there, I was talking to Dan from Hamilton County, and I think their auditor is going to call you and talk to you. He's not opened the courthouse, say, I haven't opened their courthouse yet.
Oh.
Yeah.
And he was wondering how we were getting along with, of course, I know we're getting along great.
Mm-hmm.
So, I said, "Well, good thinking, Paul," but I think their auditor is going to call you and talk to you.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, I've got to go back. Um, I skipped this, because I actually didn't have it right, wrote my book, but on the nineteenth, that evening, we had an EMA meeting. And I certainly did attend that, and that was very good. So, then this past week, on Monday, the twenty-fourth, I had a building families meeting via Zoom that afternoon. And on Friday, the twenty-eighth morning, I had a second judicial district meeting via Zoom. And all things considered, Zoom meeting wise, they went quite well. That was my, one I forgot, my two this past week, that's what I have.
Is Ben out there?
He's not.
There he is.
One ninety.
Right.
Right on time.
Did he get anything for you?
Yeah, I didn't wonder.
Sure.
Get that out, wait. Get it, wait.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Covered everything that we're supposed to cover?
I think so.
Very good. Well, yes, we have Ben here, and it looks like an approval of application.
Yes, so the, the first thing that I have on the agenda is the approval of the application to work in, in the county's right-ofway for Dodge construction. Um, as you know, he's doing that acreage cleanup on County Cave and tearing out some bins, uh, an old barn, um, the, I think it was the Lynn Miller House, he tore down as well.
Mm-hmm.
And he wants to clean ditch from where we extended the driveway to where he put in that new intake here last month. It's like four hundred feet, something like that, but with all this demo, he's spilt some dirt out into the right-ofway, and he wants to go and basically reestablish the ditch. Um, from talking to him, it sounds like his intention is to develop that into a subdivision area up there.
Mm-hmm.
But in order to do, uh, what he wants to continue, he'd like to dig the ditch out. I told him that we could do it, he said, "Well, he's already got..."
Yeah, he's got the equipment sitting there.
"...he's got the equipment there, he'd like to just follow through, clean up." But we've never allowed a private contractor to dig in the ditch before, so I figured I better bring it in and get proper approval and everything else.
He's right there, I don't see a problem with it. I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
I'm sure he'll get all the one-call things put in, in case there's any fiber optic in the ditch or anything.
It's, it's all on the west side.
I'll bet.
But yes, hopefully get all the locations and everything put in.
So, will we let him, I mean, will we...
We'll supervise it, right?
We'll supervise, yeah. I mean, he, it's not like he can overexcavate, because he's got a start point and an end point, and it's a short enough distance.
So, go one, yeah, good.
All right.
All right. So, first and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got that taken care of. Uh, then, who's the hiring of new county employees, it says.
Yeah, sorry, didn't mean to be cryptic on any of it, I didn't have accepted offers by Thursday afternoon. Um, so with the retirement of Steve Illy and Jeff George, and most recently, late Friday afternoon, Mike Mail, uh, we've offered three positions out of this last interview cycle to, uh, Colton Smith, Spencer Naris, and Derek Woehrle.
Can you repeat those again?
Uh, Colton Smith of Livermore, uh, Spencer Naris, uh, Badger, and Derek Woehrle before the city.
Derek what?
Uh, Woehrle, that's W-O-E-H-R-L-E.
W-O-E-H?
R-L-E.
R, okay.
Yeah, I, I had to ask too, because it doesn't look like that.
Gotcha.
Um, but we offered the position to all, all three of them. They accepted, contingent upon board, board approval, uh, drug testing, and D O T physical, pre-employment physical.
And all, all three of these will be in the Humboldt shot, right?
All three of these will be in the Humboldt shot, but definitely unprecedented.
Yeah.
Do we, do we also do, not that I'm worried, they check their driving records and all that stuff that's...
Yes. So, we run, uh, we run everything through Grigor background, um, couple of speeding violations, but nothing set out.
I just didn't want somebody that had nine speeding tickets in the last month that was driving their dog through.
Yes.
So, I just, it's going to happen.
Yep.
Do we need to officially approve the resignation of Mike Mail next week? Next week?
Yeah, because it was late enough in the day on Friday, I, I didn't call to try and get an amended agenda. I mean, it was three, three-thirty, I think, when he came in. His, his official end date will be, it's October sixth or seventh, something like that.
You got it, right?
Uh, yes, yes, it was about it. And I'll find out the exact date when I...
And you have a starting wage for, thing for all three?
So, the starting wage for all three of them is going to be our apprentice rate, which, we'll have to dig out the end contract and see what...
And an effective date of when the guys are starting?
Yeah, and, and they're still working on their effective date.
Okay. We'll come back with that later, Ben.
Yes. It's twenty-two something. So, it was seventeen?
I don't think so, I, I don't think they'd like that.
Yeah.
Uh, apprentice rate is twenty-two ninety-one.
Are all three of them certainly working somewhere?
Yes, so, uh, Colton Smith is, has been running a crane for the last fifteen years for elevator services. Um, Spencer Naris works for New Co-op in Badger, and the third guy drives a truck and works for, uh, Pope Church in Milwaukee. So, body, quite a bit of, uh, heavy construction experience before the...
Okay. I guess, well, we don't have first, but, well, that's fine. I'll just ask one question. Did you have a fairly decent pool of candidates?
We did. We had, uh, seventeen, eighteen applicants. We interviewed, uh, eight.
You did that, okay, good, good. All right.
Okay.
But each one of them are all together, Craig. You can do all of one, if you want to. Okay, I'll make that motion to approve the hiring of Colton Smith, Spencer Naris, and Derek Woehrle, at a rate, uh, apprentice rate at twenty-two ninety-one.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Anything else? That's that?
I don't believe so. We just, I think we have a meeting with Renee after...
Yes, he will be here.
And we're pretty much right on schedule, so it's good.
Shooting for it.
Well, I'm going to get you out there.
Well, we got, knock off the town foolery and don't let me talk, we'll be fine. Right, Dave?
That's right.
Got a board?
All right, I'll make a motion when we go into drainage.
One second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In drainage. If we can't keep that one, why?
Yeah.
Listen, uh, I talked...
Okay, we'll go get Trish. Dick, do you want to answer? Did you see that? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a hole over underneath it. There is. Oh. Hello, everybody?
Love how you do it.
I'm going to get out of here and pick on Sandy.
All right, that sounds good. I'm good to be checked on.
They're all there on Zoom. They're all there on Zoom.
Yep.
Question board.
I'll turn you around so you can see everybody, kind of, sort of.
Uh, they can look at you.
No one's looking at me.
They do, they can hear me.
You can all hear us? Okay, good to you. Is that as loud as it goes? Um, I believe so. Hang on here. That's it. Um, I believe so. Hang on here. That's it. It's as loud as you get. Maybe you should put it on the, on the board table. That way maybe it'll, the volume will just kind of look better. There you go.
She being a tire?
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Morning. All right. We need a motion to call the meeting to order.
I'll, I'll make the motion to call the joint meeting between Humboldt Webster, um, for...
I will second that, Humboldt Webster.
Okay. So we need a roll call vote?
No, we just need all to, you're the chairman of this.
Right. So what?
We need to appoint Eric as chairperson?
It's all right.
Or who do you want to as chairperson?
I'm here.
I will appoint Eric as head of Humboldt as chair.
Who was that?
That's Mark Canada.
I'll second it, Remers.
Any discussion? All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then we need to call for a roll call vote of members present.
Hey, I think, uh, do we do that after a closed session, opening that?
We can, yeah.
I think I'll make a motion to go into closed session for Iowa Code Section 21.5-1C.
I'll second it, Remers.
Got a first and a second for closed session? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. We're in closed session.